Okay, we'll start over. This is Tuesday, April twentieth nineteen twenty twenty-one. Supervisors and attendants are Larry McDevitt, Mike Stainis and myself, Jack Willie, Lisa Smith, our county auditor, and Luann Golkey, our administrative assistant. And we started a little earlier today because we have a busy morning. And our first agenda item is Mike Dreyer, our county engineer. David.
That's my son.
Sorry about that. Yes, I should look at the agenda.
First project on our agenda is a bridge in Kalamore Township, number two four seven two three hundred eighty. Avenue, let's see, a small bridge, plan is for places with the culvert. We've seen two bid estimates or one bid estimate from Shekel Construction as S two construction and the amount of sixty-nine thousand five hundred fourteen dollars and twenty cents. The other contractor we contacted provided that they were had too much work and they couldn't assist us on this project. So we're left with the Shekel bid, which we believe is a reasonable submit on recommend approval.
And this is the eleventh time that we're talking about.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So that takes it up to oh eighty thousand.
Sure.
Okay.
It's not that you probably get anything up there that hadn't.
No, well, part ways. I would make a motion to approve the bid as presented.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve the bid of sixty-nine thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty cents from Shekels. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Other item on the agenda, number B, is next asphalt patchy. And River City and Payton, Kuzner Construction, and the Nats. Well, it is Kuzner Construction at twenty-three thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars and forty cents. Second, what was bid is River City at twenty-eight thousand three hundred and one and twenty-nine cents. And then that's at thirty-four thousand three hundred and three dollars and zero cents. We recommend ordering the contractor, Klesner Construction.
So with.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve the patching to Klesner Construction for twenty-three thousand five twenty-five thirty-seven forty. All those in favor? Aye, motion carried.
And number C, there's a plank lumber. Prices have gone up fairly significantly, going up from a hundred thirteen dollars last year for sixteen foot four by twelve. Plank to a hundred and thirty-two dollars. You see two proposals, some of those, one from Wheeler Lumber and another from Oval Forest Products. Wheeler Lumber is the low bid at fifty thousand four hundred dollars. The planks will be used for back walls and the wings on embankments for the day labor bridges that are planned for this year. So we would recommend ordering that to Wheeler.
So we didn't need near the quantity of planking as we normally would because we're doing the concrete decks. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I'm sorry, did you say what the cost was last year per unit or no?
Thirteen dollars for sixteen.
You know, that is, that still don't seem as bad as I thought it. You look at everything else.
Twenty-eight footers one from two hundred and eleven to nine sixty-six.
So too bad we can't switch these two. The twenty-eights are a lot cheaper. From Oval.
I would mostly approve the bid as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Wheeler lumber bid of fifty thousand four hundred dollars. All those in favor? Aye, aye, motion carried.
Steel Coats, item B. Some middle of O'Brien Steel Services, Living Enterprises, Skyline Steel. For various cross sections from twelve to ten.
That would be the treasurer's office. The number is six five two five six four nine.
Anyways, O'Brien Steel Services, the whole bid at seventy thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. Or in was seventy-eight thousand forty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. And Skyline Steel was seventy-five thousand eighty-seven dollars. So these prices have gone up a bit as well. But I don't think they're numbers again. But I must have.
Are these are these culverts or what? This is steel.
Ivy.
Yeah.
Ivy.
Okay, all right. These sections. I forgot what that was. Making motion to approve a little bit.
Second, motion and a second to approve the O'Brien Steel Service, um, low bid of seventy thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Get announced twelve times fifty-three pounds per foot.
We're still using repurposed beams too, when possible, correct?
Oh, yeah, if we have things in the yard, we will use them.
Even local contractors sometimes offer that.
Yes.
Right away utility permits, so the first one on the list is for the telephone company. Lowing cable from a vault on seventeen to three hundred forty-first Avenue, pride service at fifteen one eight six three hundred forty-first Avenue. We recommend approval permits.
For move.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye, motion carried.
Second permit is for line energy to install electric service. Eighty-five thousand volts on the side of Hundredth Avenue, starting at Highway sixty-four running south for three hundred and fifty feet. That'll be a directional bore and continuous to conduct. We recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second, a motion and a second to approve the aligned energy permit, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
And the final item that we have is Black Hills Energy, installing natural gas service for a customer located on two hundred and fiftieth Avenue. Recommend approval.
So.
Is it just a replacement line, not a new line, is that correct?
It's a replacement, yes.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve the Black Hills Energy permit, all those in favor? Aye, aye, motion carried.
Now, yeah, and so I have all my agendas for today.
Okay.
Things are going as planned.
Well, as good as I can do.
Um, do we know any kind of timeframe for that? Our collar, call word that we did, you were just approved this morning with S two?
Maybe the eleven come. Sometimes it's summer or fall.
Yeah. So I had a question posed to me this morning, which I didn't have the answer. And maybe you deal with it now. On Main Street out here, or Flat Street, is that laptop or concrete?
I have to look.
Frank's gonna be here in a sec.
Okay. Yeah, I just, no, I really don't know.
If I were betting, then I'd bet it's concrete.
I would think so too.
What is the south main? What is that? That's concrete, that's concrete, right?
Yeah.
The bump outs are anyway.
Yeah.
Why was somebody asking that?
People are just curious.
Yeah, it's quite all right.
Actually, it was part of a conversation of why they keep postponing it a month. And part of it as well, it was too cold, blacked out or whatever like that. It hasn't rained enough to get construction going yet.
So do we have any visitors or citizens that wish to address the board? Hearing no one. County auditor, Lisa, it's your turn.
Good morning. This morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the April thirteenth twenty twenty-one board proceedings as written by auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Second, a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve a handwritten warrant to U.S. Cellular for seven dollars and thirty-three cents for the county attorney's cellular phone bill. And for Rick's body shop for the sheriff's office vehicle repairs for three thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-nine cents.
So do they have to just, they can't wait till an extra plan period or what's the?
As both of them, this, I know that the U.S. Cellular bill for the county attorney was not paid last week. We're holding all of those checks because we'd like to pay to one company. We sent all of the checks and this one was not submitted, so we want, we've been holding the checks. As far as what's been happening with Rick's Body Shop, I've been working with them for several months. There was a miscommunication between Chelly and myself last week. And they really need to be paid. They've been patient with us, but we do need to get this bill paid.
Okay, move to prove.
Second, a motion and a second to approve the handwritten warrants, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Motion needed to accept place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the April eighth twenty twenty-one meeting.
So second, a motion and a second to approve the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
I am going to table the next item on my agenda because I've invited Marty to come and talk to you about the law tractor situation.
Okay.
So I do, and maybe we need to hold off as far as approving the bills for the Together We Build project.
Yes, I think John wants to discuss that when he comes.
Okay, so we'll table that one. And then my last item today is I need a motion to approve and authorize the board to sign resolution number eight hundred and seven dash zero four dash twenty dash twenty twenty-one. For the second half inter fund operating transfer for fiscal year twenty twenty slash twenty twenty-one. In the sum of six hundred and seven thousand six hundred dollars from the rural basic fund eleven thousand to the secondary road fund, fund twenty thousand, effective April twentieth twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
My motion and a second to approve the transfer, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
That's all that I have right now.
Okay. Luann. This time we'll be joined by Luann Golkey, our administrative assistant.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, on your calendar for this week, at ten o'clock this morning, as I said, it's on the agenda, it's a law enforcement center work session. And at noon is a Together We Build work session, also with John Hansen, at the Oklahoma State Bank. Six o'clock tonight is conservation board meeting by Zoom for Larry. And at seven o'clock is a webinar answering why we can regenerateions. For those of you that want to attend that. Thursday, April twenty-second at nine AM is a regional planning affiliation meeting, a RPA meeting by Zoom for Jack and Larry. And at noon on Thursday is Mississippi Valley Workforce CEO meeting by Zoom for Jack. That one got moved from Friday to Thursday. Monday, April twenty-sixth at four PM is an early travel to Iowa Council meeting by Zoom for Jack. And at five PM, the Mississippi Valley Workforce Executive Committee meeting by Zoom for Jack. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, April twenty-seventh at nine AM. And that evening at seven PM is a McCoke the River watershed Isaac's Plan Public Input Meeting, also by Zoom for Larry. Only other business I had on my agenda today was discussion possible action on Genesis's request to have Ryan be a CPA trainer for them.
Well, I told several emails on that.
Yeah, and I I did talk to Jean, I think, three times last week. And I talked to Ryan and Jean sent us some material for us to review about what their needs were and I I guess it's up to up to you guys. I really would like to see if we couldn't support it for at least a year and see how it works out for Ryan. If it doesn't work out, he can let us know and we wouldn't renew it. But they do give us funds to help pay his salary. And he said he would do whatever we told him we wanted him to do so. But it's it's obviously I'm one person, so you can chime in and share what you think.
Um, I guess we'll send the information from Ryan too, as far as his hours, his educational hours that he's supplying to the hospital personnel. He breaks it down into hours performed there and and what I'm getting out of them numbers is between twenty-one and twenty-five percent of his time is allocated to the hospital now. For educational hours, so I I just don't. I guess I wish I knew how much time. Yeah, I don't want to overburden him either, you know, he's doing a tremendous job for us. I somehow I feel that it's Genesis's responsibility for their employees to get that training. They had the personnel before that were trained to do that. I just don't understand why, if they're willing for Ryan to pay for Ryan to go do it, why wouldn't they pay one of their personnel?
I guess that's my feeling too. It feels like they're just eliminating a full position and expecting Ryan to pick it up.
I think they're giving their fair share out of Ryan, what they commit to his. You you could. I mean, you can look at a salary, that's not the full package benefit package.
No.
It's just hard for me to justify that he spends more time there.
That much more work.
Well, their big concern was that if 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 the Genesis staff that they trainers that they have are are employed, that hospital employees would have to go to that training. And they wouldn't, I don't know why, they won't bring them here to train.
Well, they certainly have facility in Davenport that I would think they have personnel there that they could break here and train.
Well, but that's not what Jean said. If if they get trained by the Genesis trainers, they have to go there to be trained.
Well, they need to change their policies that are twenty people going, one person.
Well, all I know, all I know is what Jean told me.
Are you looking for a motion?
Him.
Well, I know that there, I I know that Jean's anxious to find out what we're gonna do.
So would there be a possibility that we could hire a part-time person to work with Ryan for some of this? And I don't know how that would work.
I mean.
Things seem to be working really well right now, it's just extra hours for you. And I can't, I can't, unless he tells me he has the time, I I don't know that. And he indicated to us that his schedule is pretty full. And I I can see where Genesis is coming from too, if they had somebody local that could do it.
And one of their trainers is retiring. That's Nim Flagle is retiring and she's one of them that does the training, helps with the training now. And she is retiring and she will not be able to do it anymore.
She's retiring from that position, for the training position right now, retiring.
She's retiring, retiring.
And that's my question, why don't they replace that? It's definitely needed. To stay current.
I absolutely cannot answer that.
Well, it's my position at this time, I don't want to put any more burden on on Ryan's responsibilities, so I would make a motion to not supply that training as requested. All right, what second thing?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, aye. Motion carried.
That was all I had for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is Marty's schedule come in?
I asked Marty to come in at quarter to nine.
Okay, it's now seven minutes too. This time we're recess. This time we'll reconvene the meeting. We all have those.
Okay, well, this is the new and improved one with the trade-in. Do you have that?
No.
You won't read them again.
Okay, so so PMK, we'll start with PMK. There's a change there, they're not in it.
Right.
Okay, so Kuna Implement. They are giving us five hundred dollars for the trade-in for a cash sale price of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. JP Sherman from Farley, they've offered us a trade-in of one thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents for a net bid of twenty-seven thousand.
My question to you, Marty, is if that machine is worth more than that to keep as a spare or as a?
We have three other lawnmowers.
That's not my question, is this one better than what you have for? I mean, you have three other lawnmowers, are they as good or can't? Right now, you're doing a majority of the work with this lawnmower for twelve hundred dollars. I can't see getting rid of it for that kind of money, but that's just.
It it'll probably never be used.
Okay.
Is it is the thing? It'll sit there because I got two that are better than that one.
And then you'll have a new one.
Yeah.
Will be the major. You have two that are better than that. Yeah, I'm sorry, Lisa, can you give me the number then for Kuna?
You want the net bit of Kuna?
Yes.
The net bit of Kuna is twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars ninety-seven cents.
Twenty-seven.
It was twenty-eight four twenty-eight, or am I looking at something wrong here?
That's what mine shows too.
It went up five hundred instead of down?
Well, that might be. Well, that might be him. See, I don't have the original one, so I don't know.
So here's what I can tell you, looking at this, is that the, how about we may have Luann give us just front copies? Because to me, I'm looking at Kuna as the equipment total on this bid. On the original bid, it was twenty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. Here it's thirty thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. So the actual price of the machine went up.
What's the number on this one? When that is the?
It's an F two, it's an F twenty-six ninety, so it's still the same model.
Let me go talk, call him because he said he just, whatever the original price was, he knocked five hundred dollars off. Is what he told me.
He went the other way then.
Okay. He he probably messed up. And see, and I didn't have these bids. So I don't know.
You want this?
Yeah, and then I'll call him.
That's that's the old bit. This is.
Yeah, take that one too.
Yeah.
I mean, I can see where that could happen, but.
Yeah, okay. I will get back with him and then I'll come back next week and okay, that, does that work for you?
Why don't you just come back later today?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just say, telling that we need to have it today.
I will soon as I leave here.
Is this machine available?
Uh, by July first, it will be.
Yeah, that's why you want to get it ordered as fast as you can.
And both both of them have to order it.
Yes. Yeah. Okay, and then my second thing is, uh, the CD at the care facility. We went and looked at him again. John Shekel, and then I had the other guy go look at it. Again, I'll let Lisa read them off because she's really good at it.
So you have two estimates here. The first estimate is from CT Landscapes. Their net bid is for four thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty cents. And Shekel seeding is for four thousand six hundred dollars even. And our in our timber is five thousand nine hundred dollars.
To level and seed that?
Yes, and put dirt there around the tube. Secondary roads is gonna give me another sixty yards of dirt. And where the tubes go up and down in the rows, these guys are gonna fill that in, fill it all up, seed it, straw it. And also alongside the drawing line. Am I correct?
Yeah. We pulled all the trees out, that was part of the bid, right? Pulled all the trees, are the evergreens or whatever they were.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, that was supposed to be part of the, you told them that, that was part of the bid.
Yes, yes, I did. Um, we, I got ahold of Roger Growth who services that. And asked him if we could level them off, if we could drop them tubes down to the ground so we can mow over top of them, whatever. And he recommended that we not do that because sooner or later, somebody's gonna hit one of them with the lawnmower. He is gonna service that here in the next, I believe, the next month. He is gonna look at that. He says the way that is designed now was designed for twenty years ago, is the way they used to do it. It should have been designed different, so there should have been only three tubes sticking out of the ground. Bit two. So he's gonna throw a number at us, whether we do it or not, but it's just gonna be so we know what it would take to eliminate all them tubes just for three. Then that way we can go from there. With discussion with Lisa, we thought maybe since I need a real big hurry to do that part, but do the driveway. And then come back after we know that number and do the rest of it.
Well, that number would be hugely different without those pipes in.
Right.
Not not necessarily, I don't think, because they're looking at them pipes now from what I'm telling, they're looking for a grade level. So they still have to be.
The pipes will be gone.
Uh, how far down?
All the, if he comes and redesigns it, then pipes all be gone except for it'll be four or five pipes at the top of the of the road.
Okay, but we have no idea what that expense will be, correct?
Right, right, but I thought before we do that, if we can wait a month, because I don't think it'll hurt, then we would know. And if it ain't really outrageous, maybe look at it.
What I'm saying is if we're not mowing it, so if we get it seeded and leveled, it's, I mean, before that, you've gone hard. So is is imagine, imagine, are they willing to maybe do that part of it?
I I can't answer that. I just wanted to know.
Jared had indicated part of that at one time.
Yeah, I just wanted to get a number, so before we tear it all up and seed it and have all the pipes up there. And then this guy comes back and says, well, you know, two thousand dollars, I'll do this, which I'm just throwing a number out there. We don't go, God, I wish we had known that before we spent all the work. If we can wait a month, which I don't think will hurt because he can still mow it, it's level enough to mow it. And then then have that work done would, I think, would be better for us.
But there's no seeding there now also, whatever grows is volunteer.
Where I find the dirt, but there's grass in between.
Yeah.
Okay. So why do we have to mow it? Couldn't you plant at the prairie or something like that where it's just a natural or or some other kind of grass?
Now, that, I don't know. All that I know is Dave, ever since I have been kind out there, Dave has mowed that. But he.
I don't know if that's a maintenance thing, if they needed to get in there too, it looks really nice, but yeah.
Yeah, it does, I agree with you a hundred percent. These guys actually mowed with a lawnmower. Dave mowed it with the, uh.
Fresh lawn?
Yeah. Yeah.
Which you can't, you can't get around seventy-five pipes.
No.
Right, right. He never mowed that, it was big tall weeds there.
So when I, when you pull them pipes out of the ground, they're only down in there. So when I, when you pull them pipes out of the ground, they're only down in there, what, six, eight inches?
I I I'm a, I'd be lying to you, but I thought no more than a foot, so.
Okay, so are they proposing, or is this growth proposing to cap that down in there? Because somebody had said something about runoff water now because the pipes go into the other one and they're underground, so.
With my, with my conversation from him, I think he's gonna dig that up and just put one vent pipe at the top of it. And eliminate all them down through there. Not cap them, they'll be gone, and the other pipes will hook into it. And then it'll be gone. It'll be just one vent pipe for each run, and I think there's four runs, if I'm correct. No more than five.
Well, that sounds like you're gonna dig the whole system up again.
Well, where all them tubes are, yes.
Wow. That sounds.
Well, it sounds expensive, but you won't know until we get a number.
I think we should wait. I think you should get the number and.
That would be my suggestion. If if if, uh, who's the, John's little bit, right? If he, if that works for him, if he can hold off for a month, I think that would be the best for the government. And if it comes back and it's ten thousand dollars, then let's fill it in and mow around weed eat around them. But if it comes in for a couple thousand, a couple three thousand, it might be worth it.
Well, we'll just see what the bid comes in.
Because John also said that too, that they gotta be getting a lot of water from the from the ground going down in pipes, because they're not sealed, they're just stuck in a, in that pipe somehow.
Yeah, I I already pulled a couple of them out.
And so did John.
Last year, but. Um. Okay, so I mean, there's a chance the bids could change then or something, you're saying, so you're.
I would think.
We're not really willing to award anything here either because they don't know.
Well, that's true too. But I still think we need to do the stuff alongside the driveway.
I do too, but this is all in one bid, as always.
Well, why don't we reject all the bids and have them bid that section that you want, and then we'll come back later after we figure out what are we going?
Yeah, see, I tried to get ahold of Roger Growth, but he lost his phone or something, and it took him like four or five days to get back. Otherwise, I'd have had that info before he could get back to me.
Also find out if we, if there's something like rye grass or, like rye grass blocks out weeds too. I mean, naturally keeps it. If we could plant something that looks good, or feather grass or something like that.
What I'll do is I'll make sure that it, it it doesn't have to be, but how tall do you say that grass gets? Will it get that tall, a couple feet?
Probably, yeah.
I'll ask Roger if we can do that. Instead of mowing.
Or if there's something else that we could put in there, just unnatural things that you don't have to mess with.
Probably do that.
So are we still going to pick, okay, this would imagine? I mean, they want to mow it and look good, so is it our decision to plant grass this tall in there, or is it, are we?
I think they would have to say yes.
Yeah. They did it at the golf course. I don't care.
Okay, do some checking and and.
And I'll I'll check these bits again, and I'll get ahold of him right away, because I'm sure that's just a misprint. I'm thinking he's.
Or even if it could be in prairie habitat or something like that.
I will do that.
And also, these bushes can go.
Yes, we're working on that.
Okay.
I know it's taking a long time, but I'm, I'm gonna get done with that bar. I'm about done. Hopefully by the weekend, I'm done up there, and then I will take care of them bushes. All right?
Okay.
Thank you. So you let us know either way here if you make contact.
With.
Kuna.
Kuna. Yeah, I I you'll answer my phone.
Right you.
Yep.
Okay, we'll recess till we're joined by Sarah Davenport. Me, Sarah Davenport, to discuss Genesis V and A lease for their office space.
All right, so Dr. Elise, and I did email out to everyone. So there's a number of things that I need to board to decide. One being how long would tell me you want, and another being how much time you want to. Also, it was mentioned to me that we want to allow them to add their name to the sign inside the pine rows. So question that I have to board is whether that will be a terms expense or landlord expense. And then the final issue is parking, whether we wanna specify how many parking spots they have or leave it with adequate.
Most of their work is done away, isn't it?
Michelle was on.
Michelle, hold on. I I don't have.
And. Can you see me now, Jack?
Yeah, I can see you now.
Yeah, most of our work is done out in the community, so we will be in this office very little. Jen Warren, maybe one day a week, maybe Sarah will drop in in and out. As you all know, Sarah's semi-retired but doing foot clinics still in the community, and so if she would need to just drop in for a few hours between clinics, something like that, and kind of Jen the same same way. But probably Jen would be the only one that would be maybe one, one day a week. So I would think we wouldn't really need an assigned parking place as long as there like street parking or how, do you have a lot or?
There's a lot behind the building.
Yeah, okay.
So it's leaving as adequate?
I think so. I mean, we we're gonna have to address that anyway somewhat.
Yes, we are.
With the assessor's office and Marty and whatnot there, we need to address that part a lot for that building. To me, it is. Um, so one item at a time, is that correct? Uh, the signage, I like, I would think they could put a sign on there at your expense though, right? I mean, you could use our post, but you're gonna get your own sign made, or do you want us to make a sign?
No, I would just put Jackson County Public Health is what I would put. I I, what do you have out there now?
It's a, it's a white sign and it lists what offices are in that building.
It would.
Veterans Affairs.
On the side.
It would be just a line on the sign, P and K.
Basically, it's a writer. I mean, it would be like a writer on it.
The.
Yeah, if you just add.
AMP Graphic did the sign for us, and they would add your, your, whatever you want there to that.
Yeah, I would just add Jackson County Public Health.
Okay. You don't have any idea what that costs?
Spencer.
Huh?
That's what I'm asking you.
Okay, would that be at our expense or your expense?
Um, I can pay that, that's fine, as long as it's, I mean, I'm, would think it'd be reasonable if they're doing it for.
Yeah. The sign was reasonable, so I would say yes.
No, that's fine. You can send that to me.
Okay. Turn.
Um, yes, how long do you want this?
How long do you want the lease for?
Um, would two years be acceptable? Or do you want to go fiscal to fiscal?
Is this a trial run or is this permanent? I guess, I don't know. Is this a is something that we're gonna see if it works out for both sides? I don't see any issues, you know?
Um, I, yeah, I mean, we can do.
Unless all of a sudden we need the space.
Yeah, unless you guys need the space, so, and but you couldn't you put that in your lease agreement that if you know, county offices expanded and you needed the space, you could kick us out within sixty days or something?
So how about this, we have, you you've got a copy of the lease proposed lease? Yeah, okay, so what are we looking at? We're in April here now, so if we went to fiscal year, it would be next July.
Well, and my recommendation is whether you do it for one year or two or three, I would have it end at the fiscal year, so then from then on so we're gonna start it, I think. I had heard that they wanted to move in last week of April, so I put April twenty sixth. And then end June thirtieth, whether it's next year or twenty three, that's up to you guys.
Well, I I I would think we'd want it to be twenty three. It doesn't bother me.
I go for two, I go for two years with an extension every year, you know, and continue from there on out.
You want it to be an automatic? Unless.
Yeah, I must do that. Or do we need to review?
That's what I'm asking.
I'm, I still think you just don't. Two years is a long time. I mean, the year, right now, we're at a year and two months, so that's fourteen months. Okay, let's set that, and then from there on, we would, I mean, just look at it and see if. It's just a matter of looking. Does everything work out okay? And everybody said, yeah, I would say, good.
So you just want it to be until next June or June twenty three?
I don't care if you put it till June twenty three, but I think we review it next year and say, everything's fine. Those of you on. If. If we're butts heads for some reason, undoubtedly known reason, then we need to review it, that's. If that makes sense. Is that okay, Michelle?
Yeah.
So then the last one is rent.
And I've had some, I guess I talked to Michelle a little bit yesterday. We we had a conversation, and I talked to Jen a little bit, and I don't know, maybe give me your, give us your thoughts, Michelle.
Well, I think kind of what, you know, I'll kind of summarize what you and I talked about yesterday, so. Um, you know, I would love if you would say I could just use the space because of the, with the the services that we provide, and I think Jennifer reviewed the the contract that we have through the Board of Health. But I do understand having to meet budgets and paying light bills and things like that, so if you feel you know, that I need to pay a kind of a token for the light bills and the snow removal and things like that, I'm I'm willing to do that also within, you know, a certain level or reasonable, I guess. So I guess that's up to you guys how you want to take that.
So as I understand it, Michelle, that Genesis is involved to the point they were paying, they were paying for space at the old hospital, correct?
So, yeah, as I explained to you, so Jackson County Regional charged a space for that basement offices. There was three offices there in a waiting room. And so when we first went into that agreement with them, the the V and A skilled side were using that as kind of a step down office. And then also the, our biller was using an office, and then Sarah was using an office for emergency preparedness and other public health service. Well, take us back now fourteen months later, and COVID has changed a lot. So the V and A skilled are no longer using that as a drop office, so their person is just working pretty strictly out of home or, you know, going from home to home. And then our biller is going to move also to her home office. So at this time, the only person that will need the office is Jen and Sarah to, you know, kind of be the token public health in Jackson County to be a presence there. And so that's kind of where we were at. What we were paying was around five hundred dollars a month, but we were splitting it to almost three ways. I think Billy was actually paying a little bit too, but skilled and public health were paying it, and I was paying it out of my portion out of different grants. Um, putting it into a cost report for immunization, preparedness, and then also some public health funding too. So that's kind of how I was paying that part of the Jackson County regional contract.
Is this strictly for Jackson County, or do you go along farther? Just Jackson? Okay. So do we even need rent?
It's a good question.
Again, I guess the only thing is it's a county building and there's maintenance and there's, I I'm not looking for maybe just a token, like you said. Fifty dollars or something a month? I was thinking two hundred, maybe I'm over.
About a hundred and fifty dollars a month.
That sounds reasonable. I think that'll pay my light light bill.
Yeah, there was a list of of things, and as I went down that list that was kind of maintenance, you know, and I mean, to get supervision, I mean, it's gonna be cleaned, I would think, by us. That's true. I mean, we got personnel, maintenance personnel. And snow removal and just. Yeah. But I think that's. I said, we want to be good neighbors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we want the service to be here.
Yeah, we should appreciate what you do, by the way, and
Oh, thank you.
Over this last year, was probably a trial for you.
Michelle, I do have a question for you. For purposes of this lease, what address should I use for Genesis V and A?
Um, you can put the, my Clinton address here. Oh, to to send it to me, is that what you mean?
Um, so on the lease, we need an address for Genesis V and A, so if we needed to send something in writing, we need to work.
I'm gonna have you send it to my office here in Clinton County. So that's six eleven North Second Street, Clinton, Iowa, five twenty seven thirty two.
So I can get these changes done today yet? If the board is willing to offer as a change, then operate the chair to sign it when it's done, we might be able to get this done next week. So they can move in next weekend.
I would make a motion to approve the lease agreement with the changes initiated.
And authorize the chair.
And authorize the chair to sign. I would second that.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. We'll get you the contract after I get it signed, and then you can sign it and return a copy back to us.
Uh, one question for you. So with the rent, will Jackson County send me an invoice or just an unwritten agreement or not unwritten, but?
Okay, that's a Lisa question.
Would you prefer that, Michelle, do you want to pay it monthly? Do you want to pay it quarterly?
How about if we go quarterly? Does that sound reasonable?
Okay, with that, we can send you a quarterly bill.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Bye.
I'll stick around for the next one if I don't come back.
Okay.
Hey, I see, I thought I seen Kristen.
They're standing right there. Yeah, tell them that they can come in.
I don't know if you might act and such, but I know that my.
We will recess right now till Kristen. We're being joined by representatives from the Pioneer Cemetery and our Jackson County Insurance Agent, Chris Minicki. So how's Larry and Joanne today? Good.
I'll be open with just a comment. Joe, she's been handling and George have been handling the situation. Anyway, I've had a few health issues over the last few months. I haven't been quite as active like I do, but anyway, Joel and George, you know, they've stepped up and taken up the slack, and if I may add to that, you know, we have a commission of nine people, you know? And I belong to some organizations where it can get top heavy real quick, but I found in our organization from one to nine, they're all willing to do whatever needs to be done. And I think that's something that should be, you know, just recognized as far as. Okay, Joel, I got just, we got a few other things that we can talk about, but I'll let Joel get into the cemetery thing, and then maybe I'll make a few comments as we go along also. Thank you.
Want me to speak first?
You sure can.
Okay, George Doherty is out of town, and that's otherwise he would be here. He's a.
No, and that's not picking them or Lisa.
He's.
I don't see anything but the ceiling and Lisa.
That, no, I've got them online. I do too.
Hmm.
You're looking at.
I have them on the edges.
Yeah, they're on the. They're there. They're there.
Kinda. I can see a third of your head, so.
So I just want to mention that this is going to be a difficult year for our commission to begin with. Uh, of course, we lost Earl Kilburg.
Right.
And his wife Katie was a great help to us too. And now she won't be able to. The first Ed is retired ethnic immigrant and we miss him dearly. And so we probably won't get a whole lot done this year, but we were disappointed, to say the least. That Dwayne Heding couldn't continue to mow for us and must be liability insurance and all that stuff. And we'd certainly like to keep heading, mowing for key cemeteries for us. He has just sold the mowing business to his two twin sons. They're twenty-two years old, I think. And, uh, and they've always done the mowing anyway, but our concept would still be growing and he's done such a superb job for us. And it's hard, extremely hard to find someone who does a damn age for other mowing. So we, we, we do anything to keep, to keep.
Chris?
So George was wanting to check in with maybe another individual that did some mowing for you. And I wonder if he could put him under his umbrella. Is there another gentleman that mows five cemeteries or six cemeteries?
Yeah, uh, George Kilburg.
Right.
Does that for us. Uh, I, I don't know if he'd be interested in something like that or not.
I guess our only issue, and it's an issue for all of us, is that we have a liability at a county. So, uh, I, I don't know if, if Chris tells me we can do that.
Would there be a way, uh, if Dwayne Heding would agree to it, that the commission could pay for his liability? He could come out of our budget. Would that still be paid by the county?
Well, my understanding from our conversation we had is that would censure a county entity. It would basically make him a county employee.
If even the commission or the you, the county.
Isn't that what we were told?
Depends on how structured if. Just sort of expanding on what Joanne said, if the policy was bought in his name, if he would allow that. And they pay for it and just consider that part of their wages or their, not their wages. Their contracts. If you didn't financially actually do the transaction, the insurance is in place in their name. I think, I don't think they'd be employees.
Okay.
The question is, the whole central question is here is, is a belief by the Mennonite faith that they don't need insurance. And unfortunately, they're working in our society where that's pretty much a standard. I don't know if you guys have seen it. There was an agreement signed, I think, two thousand fourteen. And it's a whole harmless agreement that he held, the county and cemetery commission harmless. That's all wonderful. We usually have those involved with the insurance policy on top of it. But there's no assets behind that agreement. If something really big happened, which the odds are pretty thin, I'm, I'm going to lie. But if, if it did happen, who's going to pay for it? Because I don't know what Dwayne's assets are. That's, that's where we're sort of stuck.
Do we have any idea what the cost of a policy would be?
Just winging it three to five hundred dollars.
Let me interrupt. When I, when I talked to Dwayne, uh, he had told me that the only liability that they carry, I don't know if you're aware of this. They have a blanket policy for auto liability for the whole state of any Mennonite that drives a car. I don't know if this has any bearing on where we're at or where we're going. You would sure think if that's the case, I mean, why can't it be something else? But that's, that's her first amendment rights, you know, and we can't really tell them what to do.
I realize that.
Doesn't seem kind of odd though.
Just in thinking, there, there's a lot of Mennonites who outside work. You think they would have something along the same lines set up for a dignity general liability? And maybe he hasn't investigated that. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there.
Cause I know some of them do roofing and carpentry work and, and, and all of that. And you could certainly fall off a roof pretty easy.
Sometimes we use this thing.
Yeah.
You know, no, we don't, but they do. We just had a, these were on, they showed some difference, but they were building a building that I'm involved in. They have a trailer. They have all these electric, um, battery operated tools. And they got stolen. And they didn't have any coverage for that. Or they came back to me thinking I should pay for it.
So you wrote them out a check?
Yeah.
What a guy.
It was hooked to a pickup or hooked to a vehicle. Would, would it be covered just for accidental? Or would it be covered for content also if it was?
You have to have the contents listed. So.
Well, but anybody pulling a trailer that's doing a business or not pulling, loading the trailer with the same contents every day. So that trailer's covered if it's pulled by a vehicle that's insured, correct?
Liability, uh, the power unit provides liability. So if that was the benefit, um, the Amish's trailer, I was pulling it. And I hit a deer and wrecked the trailer in the process. We wouldn't have any coverage for the trailer. Even if I were the bad fault in the accident, I don't think there'd be any coverage of the liability because it's in my care customer control.
Okay, so getting back to your question, if you paid the insurance to cover him. I'm, I'm, I'm guessing. Would that suffice?
Yeah, if there's an insurance, I don't care where the policy comes from. That's, I mean, we just need to have a certificate of insurance to the county for a million dollars. Normally we'd ask probably, you know, either mill or two mill.
So could they, I mean, could they just buy a policy for all the cemeteries, whoever mows them? So even if.
It's got to be specific. I mean.
I suppose the policy would be with the two boys that have bought the business now, not.
Whoever'd be doing the mowing is who the policy would have to list.
So it would be part, like you said, be part of the agreement with them that this is what you're charging. Less three hundred dollars because unpaid insurance.
Well, we don't have an actual figure, you know, as like he'll get a year. He gets so much for each.
For mowing.
That he mows, yeah. And the total last year, you know, he was paid twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars.
So it's per time, per spot?
As needed.
Okay, do we put this out for bid to anyone else? I mean, I know we've talked about it before.
No, we haven't because once we found Dwayne, we had several others mowing over the twenty-five years that, uh, did monument damage. That's the main thing is monument damage. And then we have to win and repair. And sometimes things can't be repaired.
I understand that, but I also understand that things have changed, that businesses change. And young individuals are different people by a business. And I think they deserve the opportunity to be a part of it. I, I don't know that.
Well, the cemetery is a little bit different than mowing fifth world park.
I understand.
You know, because there's.
A lot of stuff in the road, yeah. Um, so would there be a policy that would cover all you guys that are working in the cemetery? I mean, can we, can we buy or can they buy a insurance policy for all workers?
Well.
And list all their names?
All like, all the contractors are doing this?
Well, our contractors and volunteers, I mean, they might back up something and act a tombstone over too.
Volunteers are covered under high cap liability policy.
That's already taken.
Okay, that's in there already.
There, that's already, that exists. So Joanne was out there speaking.
So Mr. Heding's a volunteer. Is that right, Chris?
What's that?
Mr. Heding is a volunteer and we're just making a donation.
I had an answer, but she's got the.
Yeah.
The whole crux of the problem is the belief insurance and not insurance. I think everybody agrees that he does a great job or they do a great job. And I know we've been sort of through this before.
Yeah.
The other issue, which is not germane to the cemetery commission is we exempt this. Then we go to build a building. And one of that contractor comes to us and says, I don't believe in insurance. It's a precedent issue too.
When George was notified, I think in the winter, uh, about this, it might've been late fall. Anyway, he went ahead and got his own liability. And that was only costing him thirty-five dollars for he just mows five for us. Then I heard, and I don't remember this where, that there would be an additional fifty dollar charge for George. Uh, and I don't know why, but it's less than a hundred dollars that George was paying.
Does George live on a farm?
Yeah.
You can add this to a farm liability policy relatively cheaply.
Okay.
Don't these guys too?
If they have a farm liability policy, but I'll bet you a hundred dollars they don't.
Yeah, they don't believe insurance. They probably don't have one.
Now.
I don't care how we do it, just so we're, oh, that we're not liable here if something happens. I mean, God for sake. And chances are slim to none, Larry, that something, I understand. That said, it's.
They don't even have medical insurance. I mean, I, I can't help that, but I don't want. We can't, you know. I really don't see any solution outside, outside of getting somebody else because they, they believe in their beliefs and, and the county has their responsibilities also. And I don't see any kind of a compromise. I really can't. George did a lot of research into this.
Will they allow you to cover them?
I don't know.
We never talked that.
I don't know. Um, in our minutes that Jeanette Cruz types up for us after every meeting. Dwayne Heding attended a meeting. He wanted, he was interested in mowing for us. Uh, anyway, at permanent state that we voted on him mowing. Um, and he agreed that we could pay for his insurance, according to Jeanette's.
Minutes.
Of course, that was in twenty fourteen. And then it also mentioned, um, the agreement that Ken Wright typed up, uh, for Ed, Larry and Dwayne to sign. But the stipulation was that he needed to get the insurance. We needed it for him. And apparently we didn't follow through on that because, you know, there was no insurance. But that's in Jeanette's notes. And she's usually pretty active.
Yeah, I, I would just check with them to make sure that they're willing to let you do that. And if they are, I'd proceed. And list them as, um, who you're covering.
We have no other weak parts, do we?
No, not really.
Okay, and then if that doesn't work, then we'll have to let this, it's for only one of seven.
You discussed with Georgia at quite length, I think. And George is pretty, I mean, he's on top of stuff. With any kind of way he can get it done, George would find out. If he wanted to ram against a brick wall, I think it's, it's not worth pursuing. I really don't. I hate to say that, but that's the way I view it.
But if he was willing before, maybe he'd be willing again to let you cover him.
See, I think Dwayne stopped at your house and he was very upset that he was losing this. Job because.
Well, I can understand that.
Yeah, especially just selling it to his sons, I'm sure.
So other, like the friends of Makogu the Caves and the friends of Prairie Creek. Is there a friends group that could hire them?
We don't have a friend.
Maybe we need to incorporate some friends to hire these people. I don't know if that, would that be an option or how, how are those groups treated?
I guess, Joanne, I just think you should talk to Dwayne and see if he's willing to let you do it. If he's not, then come back to see us. Cause if they're willing to, that solves the problem. If they're not, they lose out on the, on the job, basically.
Sarah, any input? Is there a way around, about?
I'm just cautioning you that, you know, you go down this road, you have other people.
I get it. We have to be covered either way.
In using Joanne's idea where payments directed from the cemetery commission to the insurance company. With bypassing that is even though they're effectively earning that money. I don't think that's a possibility. I mean, it's a possibility. It's different, but it isn't anything the county gave them. That's my point. They earned that. Let's call it three hundred bucks.
It's part of their compensation.
Yeah, it's just part of their compensation. I was in here to brainstorming and this is. I would almost throw out it to Heding's six. Instead of buying a commercial general liability policy, I'm not saying this is accurate. I'm just saying some of the things through my head. Just buy farm liability insurance for them. They buy a farm. However, we do it, get a farm liability policy and then add that mowing at worst.
Well, see, Dwayne probably owns a farm, but his sons own the mowing business.
Yeah.
Do the boys live at home? Yeah, I don't either. I would guess that they do, but I can't say.
I was just sort of brainstorming and.
Yeah.
That would, that's a way. I was just thinking the cost of that. So Earl Kilburg is doing that, it sounds like. With his fifty dollar. Okay, oh, I'm sorry. That sounds like what he's doing.
It would seem logical to say I need to have some type of coverage on like three hundred acre farm also.
So is that something you could get a price for? That's.
I really don't think this will go anywhere. I believe, the reason I say that is, uh, Dwayne. Just by limited knowledge, how their religion is structured, he's at the bottom. Whatever is said, they, they say as far as what their rules and regulations are, they go by that. And he will not intercede with, with, what his elders say. They, they will not.
But yet Joanne said he agreed before.
Yeah. But I think he was just getting his business started.
I, I think of course coming to show Jack that he, that he would have to back.
Well, we'll, I guess we'll know that after you talk to him. Well, we'll, I guess we'll know that after you talk to him. And if that's the case, then we'll have, you'll have to go in a different direction.
We'll be back next week.
Okay.
Okay.
Either way, let us know.
Yeah.
Whether it's next week or the next week or whenever. Yeah, I know it is.
Yeah, vote twice, right? We got a lot of your time, but Mike, I just want to talk briefly about the Bud Cemetery. You guys got a few minutes left?
About the what?
The Bud Cemetery.
Okay.
You had talked to Mr. McDermott on the phone. Did you talk to him in person?
I did at one time. Did Mr. McDermott pass away and his son now? I have not personally talked to his son. I've made several attempts to contact him. I have since then talked to the rentor. And he pretty much told me he got the okay from. The landlord to say, yeah, go ahead and. Let him in there.
I was wondering if you could follow up on it and see if you could have contact. We're close to, you know, doing the restoration, you know. We're real close to.
I mean, like I said, I made not numerous, I want to call it. I mean, I had better not calling the renter and having him get.
He's very agreeable.
He had enough to deal with the permanent easement, you know.
I can tell you this, that they're gonna give you permission to go in there and do your work, but I don't think you're ever gonna get a permanent. I got that from his dad and I got that from his son initially that. And I don't, and we talked to Sher about it for two, three years we've been doing this.
I don't know, maybe the three of you.
He just does not want a permanent easement running with his land. To say that somebody can go in there. He will give you permission.
We hope to work there.
And we've looked time and time again for the utility easement and we can't find one direct.
Uh, supervisor, are you aware of the five, two, three, uh, five, two, three, one, I? If not, you should make yourself aware. I mean, this was passed, I think, about the same time. When they, when they set the legislation for the Pioneer Cemeteries. And there's a lot of things in here that protects Pioneer Cemetery. I mean, a lot of things. We tried this with the. Tilt Cemetery. We never really got into it, but. It's just something he says in, in these bylaws, it could be filed, but the. Legislation that you cannot deny access to Pioneer Cemetery. You cannot. It doesn't, it even says for rest, restoration and maintenance. If you want to go pushing it something, go.
I'm just saying.
No, I understand. You know, I mean, they get more of a sugar than you do. Okay, with that being said, and that's law, you have the right to go in there. With, even without an easement, you have that right now. So it really, and they're okay with that.
Yeah.
So I think you're good.
But we're spending money on a cemetery that we have no legal access to.
Yes, that says you have access to it.
Well, I'm talking.
No, that's legal.
Well, that's the law. What he's talking about is the law of the state of Iowa.
We tried this with Tilt though, I never went anywhere.
Yeah, we ended up.
It's a can of worms, but I hear what you're saying. But if they're in agreement with it, then, then we're good. I mean, even if they don't want to give an easement and they say you can go in and do what you want to do.
So what would we need instead of an easement? Do we need something in writing to say that you have permission to access this cemetery? It's okay. I mean, the renter's gonna have to okay it. If he's got crops in there and.
We do very little damage to the crops because.
We completely understand that.
It can be made very easy. The land, uh, Grable, I don't know if anybody knows, we have a cemetery on the property. County owns it. We talked to, to Lam, or Mary looks, or Mary Little. Her husband is still alive. And it was no access, like we talked the same thing here. Very mission, just, just give GPS access to you. That's what we have. It's legal. That I'm gonna. It was really simple. I mean, all we did was, you know. No survey and just the GPS access. I'm pretty sure it's legal. We have the equipment to do that here. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's so simple. It's almost like a bracelet. Just carry a little dismal out there and hit the button and it's on. But I just wanted to bring it up.
I will try to make contact again and now we'll talk to, talk to the renter.
If we can't get legal access to the cemetery and still restored, then we'll have a knowledge if that he's ever done.
Well, we appreciate that. And like I said, he's more than willing and his dad was also. Um, to give you access to that. We just didn't want a permanent easement running on his property. For fifty years from now to save.
Out of the twenty two cemetery, you get, have a hundred percent. Do you have any questions as far as what we're doing? Any?
I think you're doing a great job.
Absolutely.
Well, no, we try to spend the money wisely. Hopefully there ain't much of them lost. It isn't accounted for.
And thank you for giving us.
We appreciate, you know, whenever we want something. Uh, ninety five percent gentlemen are always in agreement with as far as what we're doing as far as, uh.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Really, really?
Maybe you should give him that name.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Okay. Hi, John.
This morning.
No, we were looking forward to seeing you.
I think the first thing I had on the agenda was the, together we build. Pay application. Uh, for the month of April, for April first, we had, uh. Thirty nine thousand, six hundred and fifty one dollars. Which was twenty five thousand of the design development drawings. And fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty one dollars. Uh, for the construction documents. For a total of thirty nine, six fifty one. And that we had minimum fees for MCC of a thousand, three, oh, five. Uh, I brought the plans with me. If you want to take a look at them, you know, after the workshop or whatever. And, uh, I just wanted to let you know, we did push the bid back. We're gonna finish all the construction documents. But with the current market conditions and everything, and we're gonna discuss that further in the workshop. Uh, and steel supplies, we, uh, determined that it was gonna be best to push it back and try to take, uh. Let these market conditions kind of settle out a little bit.
Let's hope.
Yeah, let's hope. But I mean, I don't, I just made them coming down to where they were before, but we're in the process of working with, uh. The committee to, you know, update any estimates, probably costs and such and, uh. Another thing is that, uh, APC at Dyersville is the one that was doing some of the in-kind donation for the precast. And they had called me and they're booked out till January of twenty twenty two. So I think we're gonna do better by bidding it in the fall and keeping costs down. Uh, with that all being said, I, I was here just to make the recommendation that we go ahead. I guess I have great questions.
I guess I do. Yeah, I, I guess I don't know what was, were these, uh, fee amounts or?
Part of, part of it was for the architecture and part of it was John's.
But that was in the original agreement.
Yeah.
Ex amount of dollars. So we're not billing anything.
And they did approve it last week at our meeting.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, the, the project cost recaps and I'll start supplying them to you because we'll be visiting. Uh, identify the contracts that are in place. And so that contract shows how that architectural fee is broken apart. There's schematic design, design development and construction documents. So we'll be putting all that together so that we're prepared to go bid when we're ready.
But the committee approved it.
Yes, the committee approved.
I would make a motion to approve the T W B payment applications as presented.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I, all right, motion carry.
Okay. So then we're up to the workshop portion of it. Are we gonna try to do that up here? Or you wanna?
I think we're gonna do it up here. Um, Jim was just here, but he stepped out. Um, they're supposed to be here at ten o'clock for work session on the law enforcement center.
Okay. Cause I have some bigger plans and some smaller plans and I.
Well, we can put those two tables together and. Frank setting at and you're setting at and spread out the.
And Frank's, I know Frank's time is valuable. I was talking to him a little bit earlier. If you want to cover. Some of the fiber optics discussion.
Right, right.
Then that will allow him. To get back to work or take care of any other business.
Oh, he enjoys a little rest.
Are you implying that our time is not valuable?
Well, I, I think we're gonna have a lot.
Well, as Jim's out there.
Finish up our meeting or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, is there any other business to come before our meeting today?
So the only other question I would say I would have would be Marty's correct.
Yeah.
Won't we recess until we hear from him?
Well, we can find out if he's heard anything. Um, we'll recess. Um, and we'll reconvene. Okay, we're.
Okay, so Marty does have. Uh, a different bid from. On Kuna's. So the same tractor between Kuna's and Sherman. Kuna Implement has bid twenty seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty eight dollars and fourteen cents. Baby Sherman from Farley, Iowa has bid twenty seven thousand. Input, Marty?
Uh, they're the same machine. With nine hundred dollars. I can't haul it back and forth for years. To, to Farley. And I'm sure Kuno ain't gonna want to work on it.
Making a recommendation to accept the local bid from Kuna Implement? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think it's important to buy local if we can. And I know it's a little more, but it'll be easier for you to get parts. It'll be easier for service. In the long run, it'll be less expensive.
And they have a good service department out there.
Make motion to take the bid from Kuna.
Second, with a motion and a second to accept the bid from Kuna Implement, all those in favor?
I.
I, motion carry. You can let him know.
I will.
To get it ordered. Is there any other business to come before the meeting today?
I would make a motion that we adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor? I, motion carry. We are adjourned.